All right, this is the forum president, so we'll go ahead and proceed with the meeting. I would welcome everybody out tonight, at least the weather's warmed up a little bit. The first thing on the agenda is our consent agenda.
Motion for second.
We have a motion for second to approve the consent agenda, as in any other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both know, okay, that is approved. The next thing on there is we have the election of a Tennessee legislative representative, and that's someone, I think that we have somebody that would be really good for that job, and a man that talks for a living. Do we have any nominations for that?
I'll make the motion, Steve.
Okay.
Shane Carr.
I say.
All right, we have a motion and a second for Shane to be our representative. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both know. Shane, thank you for representing us.
(laughing).
Okay, the next thing is delegations. Is there anyone that would like to address the board at this time?
Well, this is the opportunity that I sent as late. Ms. Beverly Boss is here with the Ready organization, and she has asked to, or and I've asked her to share a little bit of her work that she's done with our high school seniors. Have you been conscientious of the Tennessee Promise that the Governor Haslam is promoting? I'm gonna let Beverly take it from there.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. First, I want to start by simply just acknowledging that a wonderful opportunity I feel I have to be in Chester County High School. I have had some tremendous support from everyone there, all the way from you, Mr. Killzer, the superintendent to the administration, Mr. Catlett, and the guidance counselors and the teachers. It's really been smooth to be working the Ready College Access Program there. A big responsibility and a part of our job has come this fall with the Tennessee Promise. And I would say, first of all, I really feel that there's a lot of wonderful opportunity for our young people, and my personal deepest desire for everyone is to see all these young people really be able to prepare and pursue the interests that they have and the competencies they have through a program like this. It serves to pay for tuition for two years of college, or two years of post-secondary. What we call college is anything beyond high school, so post-secondary training. So students can go to T-CAP programs, Tennessee Colleges of Applied Technology, and get certifications and diplomas, and get quickly into the workforce. They can go to the two-year schools, our community colleges, earn an associate degree, and from there, go on, be qualified to go into the workforce or even to transfer then at that point to the four-year schools. But their tuition and their fees are paid for through Tennessee Promise. Okay, so this really is a big boost for these young people, and I really find it a challenge then to try to help them find what is the right place for them. And we've got some good stats on this as in our work, because our first push was to get them to apply. And deadline for that application was November 1st, and the Governor was really very much encouraging us to get 100% participation. And we do know that there will be a number of students that really, in some ways, should not go to the community colleges, but they should indeed go right onto the four-year schools because they have everything lined up for that. But it's a good backup promise or possibility for them, or you might want to call it even an insurance policy, in case they have to go to plan A or B for their life, they at least have, you know, an assurance of two years of college paid if they end up going to the community colleges. So Chester County High School has had 100% sign up for that, so I think that was a good mark. And then there's another, as you, in your sheet, I've shown you some of the stats there kind of by the numbers. There is a required mandatory meeting, one in the, we're having one, it's the Ready Program, one in the fall, and there'll be another one in the spring. And I've had 145 students attend that mandatory meeting so far. I think we're gonna try to catch up with that handful that didn't make it during a block at school, a half an hour block called the CCR time, College and Career Resource Time. And then I also have, along with the Ready Program, we do a lot of other services in preparing for college. I spoke with the personal finance classes, I spoke to 125 students there, and of that, 56 of them were freshmen. So that's a good point, too, to really now try to get to the younger levels as they go on up, so that there's a lot more knowledge and awareness. Had some meetings, one on September 8th with the parents and students. Of the students, we had 139 students. There was standing room only, wasn't there, because there were a lot of parents there, too. Cafeteria was full. Financial information was for the families, and starting to file for a FAFSA in January. That was attended by 34 students. We had maybe not quite as many parents to, we probably had about 50 in attendance with the parents there. Also been preparing some students to try to find some monies, those who are especially gonna go to the four-year, where they won't be having some monies coming in from Tennessee Promise, to try to help them find private scholarships from organizations and foundations and clubs and so forth. And I saw 51 students where we kind of went through a session, a workshop, and to help out with that. So some of those are some of the things we do. I see students one-on-one, sometimes in a group, sometimes at the CCR time, that half-an-hour time that the students have in the classroom or in the day's schedule. So I've really enjoyed that, really enjoyed getting to know some of these students. Really have been appreciative how they've accepted an older lady like me into their life and kind of enjoy that interaction a whole lot. They're good, they're good young people, and it's a privilege to be there. We have some remaining requirements with Tennessee Promise, and that will be that the student must file a FAFSA, free application for federal student aid, and they have to have that filed by February 15. So we're gonna do a big push between January 1 and February 15. We're gonna kind of call Thursdays our day to be out there helping families if they want to come in. So I'll be available in January, every Thursday night, staying after school and on a, maybe to seven o'clock, or at least before, if there's a game, before it starts and I can see people. Ms. Goff and I have kind of also came up with an idea that maybe we'll do it in the mornings, too. And we've committed to 6:30 in the morning on Thursdays, so that we're gonna see once if we can have families, if they come before work, they want to stop in. So we're really trying to be accommodating and an opportunity to reach. Okay? There will be another spring meeting that the students will have to attend. Of course, they need to apply to this college, and then there will be eight hours of community service. Those are the things the students must do to maintain this eligibility of Tennessee Promise Scholarship. And the details about the scholarship are in the, in the handout. Any questions?
When does the eight hours of community service have to be?
It has to be turned in by August 1st. Where this, this, this is the inaugural year for this, so the class of 2015 is the first year that this is open to the students, and they are allowed to start their community service hours January 1st, and they should have had them completed by August 1st. The Ready is a partnering organization that Dwayne Seaton, the Mayor Seaton, has named to be handling all these requirements and doing the mentorship. So it'll be our responsibility to keep all our records straight, because we never know when we'll receive an audit from the state, and so we are very much aware of that. So all these hours, we will keep them, we will have the students turn them in to us, we'll keep that, so that it will all be accountable for. And then each semester, while in school, students will also have to do eight more hours of community service, so that will be a challenge, because they're gonna be kind of off places, and we're gonna have to stay in touch with that, but we're up for it. Any other questions about anything with the Tennessee Promise or our work? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Before we go any further, one thing here that is some information, and I just wanted, at this point, to say, Ms. Rae, is that correct? Would you like to stand up and tell us something about yourself?
Um, I just really wanted to be here to my, just to put a face with the name and to kind of see all of y'all's faces with names, because I've seen your picture on the website, and just kind of wanted to introduce myself to y'all. And I've been with local government, that's the software company that does the accounting work here at the Board of Education, and I've been with them for seven years. And I have also worked in county government for six years prior to that, so I'm very familiar with the whole process, and I look forward to getting in there and learning more about the Board of Education side of county government. I've worked with many customers, you know, as far as the Board of Education goes, but actually working for the Board of Education must be the first time I look forward to, and I just wanted to introduce myself and say hello, and I hope it'd be part of the team.
Good to have you.
Y'all have questions for me?
Any questions, anybody? Can I have you on our team?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is consideration for school improvement regarding safety and service equipment. At this time, I'm gonna ask Dr. Killzer to go over this a little bit, please.
Gentlemen, if you look at the information here, the packet about the InterQuest Detection Canine Service. Met Rocky Montgomery at a, in principle, or Beginning Superintendent's Academy, and during his presentation, he offered to do a free trial run. And that is to provide service where he comes into our schools and with dogs trained to be aware of any illegal drugs, which would be the main marijuana, cocaine, heroin, methamphetamines. And then, in this case, even beyond what we've been accustomed to, he can, the dogs are trained to detect ammunition, weapons, gunpowder, and also some of those abused prescription drugs. I don't know exactly which ones they are, but on his website, he reflects that. They come, as what we're asking right now for the board to consider, is for him to have five full-day visits starting in January. That'll be one a month, where they will come to our campuses. It will not be with full knowledge of everybody when he's coming. It will be very discreet. He will bring his dogs to inspect on, at the high school vocational building, junior high, and again, possibly Northside, too, as needs arise. Again, it is a full-day visit, it's $500. This is something that School Resource Officer, Selinda Davidson, helped broker, because we were trying to, as he pitched himself to me the first time, he's not in the southwest region of the state, and wanted to get his name out in the masses. But within your packet are other districts that he had, is currently working with, and I don't have any personal testimonies, but actually Rocky contacted me this morning through email and said he's got other newly acquired contracts with different districts. I asked Selinda to be here because when I was, wanted to kind of feel this out, we're not gonna make any commitments until I had a chance to talk to them, and I talked to Steve and heard about it. And Steve convinced me, because Steve, her husband, was actually here at the time, had previously been on the firing range either that day or the day before, and the dog actually identified his car, which, that was significant. I really, and as for the funding, we've already made arrangements through with Ann that we have sufficient funding through our support services, with contract services, so I know that the money's there. It is a matter, it is a deterrent for the possibility. I know, and again, Rocky had shared that when he was here, he noticed the, in some cases, some of the children were a little nervous about his presence. And word will get out, I mean, as far as having the commitment to be here on a routine basis, but undetermined when he's coming, but it's gonna be on a monthly trial. This is just a commitment for the rest of this school year, starts in January, ends in May, and then, like I told him, we would make a determination to end of his, this contract, see if we want to continue to service in the future. In the future, services will be $500 per day, and it'll be over the course of 10 visits instead of just five. I asked Selinda to be here in case you want to have any questions about it, because I was not present when the dog was doing the search, so that's why I asked her to come in case there was a question being posed.
Do we need it every month? Especially like May is what, the 15th and 18th graduation?
Um, no. Well, I mean, he, it's just, I'm not saying that it has, we can make it however it needs to be. He just does on all of these schools, in some cases, he goes to some of these campuses twice a month. And once a month was just what he offered to me as a, as a consideration. He can do less. Obviously, he could have done more, he wanted to start earlier than that.
What do you think, Selinda? You think it'd be every month?
Of course, you're talking to the police.
Well, I mean-
Absolutely, I think so. To my knowledge, there's not a dog in West Tennessee that can smell gunpowder. And like you said, that day, Coach Catlett had to actually make all call out to parents because the word had gotten out about the dog being there and what was going on, so it had him concerned, and it's a huge deterrent, as far as them bringing anything illegal or anything else, doing illegal activity on school property. And I have actually talked to one of the guys that's on this list from Moore County, in Moore County. He's an SRO there, and they've got the service, and he has talked about how wonderful the dogs are and how, how well the program works.
Did he paw on anybody's sash, Steve?
State trooper car. And, and he had recently been to the firing range and actually had some marijuana in his vehicle recently. One thing that you didn't mention was alcohol, it also detects alcohol.
Moore County, that'd be tough over there, wouldn't it?
So it's a multi-service dog that, you know, we, the first question I've gotten from several people is, well, why not call Jackson Dogs down here or have Jackson Dogs come? We, and we have in the past, and they've been great to help us, but for the past two years, they've had something come up, or they got busy, or they had to reschedule, and they haven't been here in probably three years. They, they stay busy, just with everything going on in Jackson. And, and also, their dogs are just to smell marijuana. The weapons, the ammunition is huge to me, that, that was my, draw me to them, and really think that it was worth it.
The dog that came today that you were witnessing, is this the dog that will come back?
They actually have two dogs in Tennessee, so I'm not sure if it was, it was the dog that came that day, or if it would be the other one who would actually come.
Okay. But they'll both do the same?
They're both trained the same way, absolutely, yeah.
Did they go through the school that day?
We did, we actually took them in, and we've done something that we've never done before. We had one of the kids, the classrooms, for all the kids to exit out and leave their belongings inside the classroom. And they went in the hall, and, and we had the dog to go in through the classroom, which we've never done before, smelled the backpacks, smelled everything, and I asked the guy, what if, you know, something is on somebody, they've got it in their pockets, and they get up from that chair and just walk straight outside, would it be able to smell that? He said that it's happened before, to actually get the odor from the chair. And, and he stressed that day to, to both of us that it's, they're not there to make a bust, they're not there to get in trouble, they're there to keep kids from bringing things to school and keeping our schools safe. That's the, that's the biggest focal point.
I think it'd be right.
Yeah, I think it'd be good.
Make the motion.
Will it be made known to the students, like, that this has been approved? You know, how does the deterrent start to be presented to the students, to know that this is in play?
Mr. James will probably have it in the paper this week.
Yeah, that's true.
I, and I would not make a major plan because word of mouth, as, as what Selinda says, gets out.
And that, that day that we had the kids to come out while the dog was inside the classroom, Rocky was actually out there with the kids, and of course, they were asking questions, and he kind of explained it to them, and it flew like wildfire. He kind of explained what, what happened, that he comes in unannounced, and the dog can smell this, this, and this, and they were just wowed. So it's not gonna take much for the, for the word to get out there.
I would probably have a proactive message before he comes back, pending board approval, to have either through the paper or through community safe call, just to let them know that we are pursuing this at junior high, high school settings, you know, just to kind of let them know that it's coming.
And after the first visit, they'll take care of themselves.
Right.
There's not any legal things that we have to jump through or hook through, things like that, is there?
Well, as she said, it's the first time they ever did what she described, but the dogs can't sniff the students, but you can. You notice when you walk in our campuses, everyone has listed subject to search, anything you bring in, and you store in the schools, in any capacity, it's, it's, it's subject to search. So even the parking lot, just because that's somebody else's vehicle when they pull in that parking lot, and we've got signs that's posted all around campus that say that, so.
Okay. I make a motion that we go with it and try and see what happens. I say.
All right, we have a motion, a second. We do the five visits from January to May, the dogs to come to the school. Any other discussion?
What about, see kids are deer hunting a lot. Is it gonna show up on them when they come to school?
It's a good possibility, if they get some other gunpowder.
How about you really say they love the deer?
Right, I'm sure they are.
But that can be dealt with.
Right.
All that does is just identify the students. That's just subject to more conversation. The dog is not gonna arrest, and Rocky is not gonna arrest. I mean, that, that goes back, all that's gonna do is just raise our awareness to give us justification to carry that search a little bit further. And, and just for your knowledge, and I know Coach Catlett follows, we make a point, because Selinda knows, I want to make sure the parent knows well in advance, this is what we know thus far. You're, you're free to come out here and observe with us, because, you know, we're not trying to hide anything, and we're not trying to make people feel like that they're just trying to pull something out or off on my child. We, you know, I would hope that every time that Rocky comes back with his dogs that we find nothing, because that will be proclaimed at the, on the rooftops, so.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both know, in motion case, we'll have the dogs come to visit soon. The next thing on here is the Jack's Creek Elementary about possible offense, they have corrected, I think Troy covered that a little bit.
Well, I had a conversation with Tangi, probably at the start of the, of this school year, because of some events with some property dogs, or dogs that were close to property. They were kennelled just north of Jack's Creek. And just being made aware of it, actually, prior to that, I really hadn't been on the property of Jack's Creek, so I walked the property, saw what the issues were. And again, you know, you have, from your picture, you have a walkway that you can see trailing around where the playground area is, it's encompassing the playground area. And then the line that exists that is trying to decide the house just north of the walkway or just to the, I guess, to the east, northeast corner of the, the building, how much room exists between that campus property and the property of that owner. The kennels are sitting right there, not many feet off of where that walkway is. We had recently a substitute teacher that was not familiar with the place, that was confronted by a dog that got loose. There was no biting, no, no injury, other than just her nerves were shot. But the more I'm hearing this, and this is what I'm, I, I feel led to say that we need to have some barrier of protection for our students. Also, if you think about it, with that being a major highway just, just north of that, it, it could provide some deterency of somebody doing something they shouldn't do, because it's not that far of a distance from the highway back to where that playground area is very open. So, you know, tomorrow, my plan is to, I don't have any dollars for what it would cost. I've talked to Mr. Johnson, because I know Mr. Johnson has been used in the past, Barbara Johnson's husband. He has been used in the past with other fencing around campuses, at different places. So I asked him, and he's gonna meet me here in the morning, and we're gonna drive out to the property, and, and I was gonna kind of show him where this potential fencing could go. We wanted to tie back into the main campus, both on the north side and the south side, and I'm not really sure where that would be best served, but again, the goal would be to encompass the entire playground area in the back, and it'd be just, again, an extra measure of protection for those kids and teachers as they're out there in the back and play or in learning activities, some take lunch out there. So it's just a, it's a safety measure that I'd like us to consider.
We're talking about, what, six, eight foot?
I'm just talking about a regular fence.
Four foot.
Yeah.
More than four foot.
More than, yeah.
Well, at the, you know, I'm thinking of what's going on in West Chester around their playground area, something close to that same height. I know West Chester and East Chester both have, their playground areas are covered. And, you know, again, Jack's Creek is a remote setting, it's a lot further away from the rest of us. We're, we're close to, you know, if anything bad were to happen, we've got a lot quicker reaction time than what Jack's Creek would have. So, but again, I can find out from Mr. Johnson what, you know, what cost would be involved.
I would say probably put that up to beds, too.
Maybe, see, I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly.
I'd say what that's gonna be.
You going all the way around the walkway?
Yes. Yeah, there's playground equipment everywhere in that, in that area.
Do, do we need to get it surveyed first?
I would say so. I told Mr. Bob earlier that even though that, I feel pretty confident that the, this is from my drawing, it's from Beverly Morton's office, and she talked to Judy Cranford also in the process of looking at the deed and trying to ascertain where it started. Do we have enough available space, both not only north and south, but also east? And based on their assessments, yes, but it would be more, it'd be more beneficial to have it done officially.
Probably do that.
I'll have it surveyed.
Okay.
Then we'll know exactly where we can go.
Basically, where the dog, things are.
Sure, exactly. So y'all's recommendation for a meet with Johnson would be to have it surveyed first?
I'd get it surveyed and then, you know, really-
Well, that's no problem, yeah.
Well, I would make-
I'd go ahead and make the decision once you want.
Okay. Yeah, and like you also said about, you know, you might get in the prices, four foot, six foot, eight, whatever, right? And that way, we would know what our options are.
I think we need more than a four-foot fence.
I would, I would do. I was gonna say I'd-
That's what it is at the way that's-
Well, any dog, it's vicious. Dog links up a four-foot fence. Wait. What kind of dog?
The one at East Chester's-
I don't know the details, I just know that I've, I've been told that she takes in dogs of strays, fours, and provides care for them. So I know that anytime you're out there, if they don't recognize you out in that playground area like me, they'll bark.
I got a, got a call from a concerned parent today.
Oh, did you?
It was out there for their fall festival, set the dog apart and running next fence the whole time he was out there.
Yes.
Something needs to be done.
Even if we put up a fence, those dogs, I mean, I don't guess you could do anything about it, but they've gotta be.
Or supposed to.
No, that's not in the city.
Not in the city.
Well, they-
Well, there are kennels there, most of the dogs are kennelled. I know a few are chained in the yard, or have been.
Give us prices.
Yes, sir.
Even with the prices, are we gonna possibly have to put it up for people?
I'd say that-
I'll let you know what the prices are.
Okay.
Let us know when you want to see what can be included. Is there any law on where the dogs-
There is a safe leash law. You gotta have your dog on your own property.
What law?
Of course, we don't enforce that until we get complaints. And just, this is just my opinion, I may be stepping over my boundaries if I am able to put you in my place. I say more than a four-foot fence, also for the specific reason of it is in the rural area, there's lots of fields on the other side of that playground, it can be very easily accessible from the highway, somebody snatched kids up and take off and hit the major highway and be gone. So if you're gonna do it, I would, I would suggest at least making it high enough where it's gonna make it easily climb over.
Well, then look forward, look in the bag and then get back on that.
Get back on.
And the last thing I think on the agenda- And the last thing I think on the agenda is, uh, to be compliant with the local educational agency. And I think all we really have to do is just both that we're going to be in compliance with the state laws.
It's just one of those requirements that we have, there's a, there's a number. And I did include in your packet, if you want to go seek out, um, the legislation that is, that's current regarding all the compliance measures that we have. This is just a vote of confidence that you're entrusting me to hold the school district in compliance. That's it, thank you.
We need a motion for that, or?
Motion that we are LEA.
Sign our LEA compliance.
Uh, we have a motion second, we be LEA compliant. And Troy will be sure to make sure that happens. Or any other discussion? All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Those know, okay, that carries.
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there anything on these updates anybody would like to ask Troy about or for anything you want to give us some information on?
The, um, well, if you've had a chance to read it, I was, as you're cruising over the documents, if you've not noticed, um, Ms. Freeze is in the home. She is dividing her group of students. Her fifth and sixth grade students are in the Goodwin home in the lower grades, maybe fourth, fifth, and sixth. I just know because my son is now in the Goodwin home on Thursdays and Fridays. And my, uh, younger child is, is in the, the, uh, original home. So, uh, and she has agreed to the $500 a month fee. So that's going to be a thousand dollars a month that she's paying for both properties. She has, I talked to J.C. Emerson, you know, the question was about how to do this new driveway. She has since put that on hold for right now temporarily. And I think it's partly because of the funding that she doesn't have yet to, to do all the work that's necessary to be able to do it right. It has not been a major issue, what I've done and what other families I've watched have done. That if you have, like in my case, children of both, I park in front of the house because she runs the gravel back toward the center of the, the old home. And it's, uh, just a short walk over to the, the Goodwin property, so. But that's where we are right now. And, uh, again, the second part there with Merle Johnson, he has, um, the tractor that has been used, like I know that we had mentioned to, uh, before, to have, uh, the wellhouse demolished on the, the. Discovery learning. The, um, right after that decision was made, the tractor's transmission tore up. So they're in the process of fixing it, but he has requested consideration to purchase maybe something, purchase a new tractor that has the capabilities of having front wheel power where if you had a bucket, it would be a lot more, um, um, helpful to be able to do some of the work that in some cases we have farmed out to other businesses that have the equipment. We're not, I have not priced anything yet because what I would like to do is, is consider, uh, having an option of equipment. Any type of hardware that's not being utilized right now. We've got Norchester that is chock full of old desks, old tables, um, TVs, um, computers, uh, that are just being stored. I know some of it is worth keeping for the parts, but not to the extent of what we have. Uh, seeking some counsel, people who've done this before, they've mentioned about just contacting maybe a, a local auctioneer like Mark Latham, having him to take a look at it. I'd like to see Norchester being more utilized in the future for something beyond just being a storage house.
I was asked about that same question, I went up there and looked around. And I, I think either John or Sherry, when we talked, is there a problem selling school property? And I was told, I thought that there was, because I mean, it's.
You can auction the property, but you can't sell it to the individuals. It has to go through an auction because it was taxpayer funded.
Right, that's.
So that's, that's what I'm aspiring to do is, you know, again, I'm trying, and there's actually, um, I asked Mike Tignor for all the buses that are parked on the backside of the bus shop behind the junior high. I know the majority of those are used for the summer food program, but there's two buses that are just there. Get rid of one of them.
Right.
They can use one for parts.
Till the state of Missouri, they buy, they have no age limit, the state of Missouri.
Is that right?
They're bound, I mean, they, they, I'm serious.
You drive it over there.
Hey, you wouldn't believe the buses that's running out with them.
State of Missouri.
But you know, if the buses are, it, I'm just looking for some revenue sources that we can.
But you'll be nearly just give the old buses away here at these auctions, you know, four, five hundred dollars.
Well, I'm looking to free up some of the property too and not have so much being used for storage because in, in the case of Northside or Norchester, a lot of those rooms you can't walk through. And it'll either be with nobody going in there, you're going to either have things lost, broken, or stolen. So better to try to find some benefit in what's there.
Don't, aren't there some stainless steel stuff out there, some kitchen stuff that could be?
There's some kitchen stuff still in the cafeteria that it's, I mean, some kitchen hardware.
Uh huh.
I don't know how good it is, useful it is.
Set us up a refrigerator.
I agree with you.
Yep. But I'm still looking, and again, we're.
So, excuse me, they are fixing the tractor?
Yes.
We would keep the tractor that we got and.
Well, if we're talking about auction, we may auction that tractor off.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yes, sir. That would be included in the auction. I, I'd want to talk to Mark Latham and I just use him as example because I know he's a lawful auctioneer. Somebody that has done that before, who knows how to make it, market it well enough where it would be sold. We don't want to price it too high, but we want to package it in such a way that, well, they'll know that it can sell. So they can free up some revenue that we can possibly use for a new tractor. They're looking again toward a 40 horsepower tractor, something that's relatively small, narrow. They can get in and out of places, but still have enough power with that front wheel power to support that work. Again, it would, it would be a cost saving in the future because there's been times where we've had to rent out or ask others, just like when we had to do the trenching around the backside of the, uh, football stadium because of the pipe that was destroyed when that, that was quite a pricey.
You know, you could get a, a backhoe attachment with a tractor like that.
Correct, it would be a PTO attachment, you sure can, yes.
I've heard it is about a thousand dollars a horsepower on these new tractors.
What brand it is.
Well, if it's got the brand thing on it.
Yeah, great牌子.
If we auction off some stuff, then we'd have to take bids on tractor.
Yeah.
So we can go with that.
Yes.
Just pursue it.
Yes, sir, that's what I, my plan was. And there's also some places in Madison, Tennessee that have, uh, there's a location that you can, and I don't know the details, my dad does, where they have bought some trucks in the past. Low mileage.
Highway 70, I think.
Off of Bradley Parkway somewhere, is it?
Oh, you're talking about.
Even toward Nashville.
There's one in Jackson, Tennessee.
Okay, there is, okay, I didn't know that one.
State, uh.
The state auction.
Yeah.
I mean, there, but usually, as he said, you won't find a decent tractor, most of those are going to be pretty much used out. I don't necessarily want to go through one of these unless you want me to.
Oh, just for a while on the lobster, I was going to ask about that.
Okay, um, had a conversation, you see what's being, what I wrote here, that was my most recent conversation when I typed this up. Today I had another conversation with Chris Aitken, or Hayton. And, uh, in that conversation, the insurance company that received a letter from, for sale sellers in Craig regarding our suit, you know, are wanting to have those monies brought back to us because of the, um, admittance of Jimmy for his mistake. They contacted the law attorney firm that Chuck, um, Chuck Cagle works for, thank you. Well, Chuck Cagle also serves us through toss. And he's been our legal counsel, I've contacted Chuck on things. So, um, as I shared to Bob earlier, um, right now Chris Hayton is asking us, it's left up to our discretion or the board's discretion, for whether we consider Chuck Cagle representing Jimmy Anderson's insurance company of being a conflict of interest.
I'd say it would be.
I, I agree. So all, I mean, you know, I was going to poll the board at some point and say, we need to make a decision. Cause I told Chris that I would call him before three o'clock tomorrow to let him know.
That's a heck of a call.
But I would say so. I would say that the shoe's on the other foot, it would, it would be an immediate reaction, so. But now Chuck Cagle also told him, and again, this is, he has attorney to attorneys, they can say what they want to, but said it seemed to be a pretty tight case.
I mean, he admitted here.
Exactly.
All of it, he screwed up.
Well, and as it reads here, Jimmy Anderson actually admitted to Chris Hayton that he admitted. And that he would when it, when the insurance company would ask, he would admit his fault. Cause he wanted to maintain a good relationship with the board. We've already got a bill from Chris Hayton, by the way, for his services thus far.
That's included in the suit to cover that too.
Anything else, any other questions?
Christmas party, this is ceremony, let you get up from the table so we can stay. Yeah, you're, you're going to have it here, okay? Just catering here is that.
We didn't need to be asked here on this end of the table.
We're going to let you, hey, we'll let you.
We're the, we're the.
You'll be lucky here, buddy.
You're going to be the waiter. Okay, I've got three possible dates, I don't know if you have a calendar close by. We've got the, uh, December 8th, which is the Monday following Christmas parade on Thursday. You got the following Monday, the 15th, or that Thursday, the 18th. So we've got the 8th.
And this is based on previous, that you usually like to have them on Monday or Thursday. So there are some other dates open, but I have checked with a local caterer about those.
Cater to life's calendar. I can't do the 8th.
Okay.
I can't do the 18th, okay?
Mondays are not good.
15th probably.
15th will work for me.
15th.
But that's a Monday, so Norris, you said you can't, it don't work for you.
Well, it, no, it doesn't. Not this time of the year.
We get Santa Claus.
That's true.
What about, what about the 16th, what about a Tuesday, how's Tuesday?
I can't.
I'll use that in town, Tuesday, I got you.
You can't the 16th, maybe not.
What about the 9th? I asked about that. Oh, I got you.
Thought Tuesday was tired.
All that big father order. You hoping to hold it, like, I got a picture.
Well, I know we came, we use a local caterer, we use free because.
That Thursday's the, that Thursday's the Christmas parade.
And the 5th is their big dinner, so.
Is that still going, they draw the news?
Yes, sir.
It's where we have, it's still going.
Okay, I'm sorry, I've been out of town and it's been all over the news.
It's what they told us today. Got too much money already committed.
What about the 19th, gentlemen, that'd be the last, that'd be that Friday.
I got a concert, I got to promote.
How about Christmas Day?
Put your priorities in a way.
I'm busy.
When are you in town? Give us some more days.
Mondays.
What, oh, we're talking about seven o'clock. I, 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 I'll, I'll give you.
Thanks. I'll have you plate already fixed.
I'll do it, I'll do that.
So you can do the 15th then, is what you're saying?
Gentlemen, we can always make this at 30, 8 o'clock.
We can make it later.
And we, we could do orders or something earlier.
You think I don't order?
They'll still be out.
Yeah, it is now, it is now.
The 8th, so we're saying the 15th then?
15th. Okay.
Seven o'clock.
Say seven, seven thirty, I suppose.
You know, yours, with seven thirty be easier for you.
Would that be better?
It would be a little better.
Seven thirty.
Just throw all that mail back, see, take it tomorrow.
Take it to next.
I wouldn't have to go back to next time.
Wouldn't have they found all that thrown in the gummy for somebody?
I know, and I would.
That's who you're working instead of.
Little side of that, sir. All right, anyone got anything else? Audience got anything? Congratulations to James on his T-Bird Lasting Way Home Award.
We need to congratulate our football coaching staff, soccer team.
Dan.
Diane.
Band.
Volleyball.
Volleyball. But, but we do need some letters to those coaches and players.
The banner's nice out front, that's really.
Yes, it is.
Who, who bought that banner?
Booster Club.
Booster Club sponsored that, it's real nice. I mean, that's the first time in the history of our football program, so it's, uh, but we sure need to recognize those teams and coaches.
Good year.
Fan directors.
Something we're going to do at the high school on the 13th of December is have breakfast with Santa. So, uh, that, that's a kind of a new thing, we'll get with Mr. Webb and let him promote that in the paper and go around to the elementary schools. We have a ton of kids that, uh, want to get involved. And we are, we'll have Elsa and Buzz, Woody and, and the whole gang and Santa and Mrs. Claus. It'll be a, a good event for the community and, uh, helping out the crowd.
Will they give breakfast?
They'd give breakfast to the kids who get started on the empty hours, they should dialogue them.
What else? Make that at the end of June, they get there in January.
After January, they're just practicing.
That's right. It's good breakfast, good breakfast.
Anything else, children?
Black folks, which are?
Uh, those sitting on, favor of saying aye?